Good evening, everyone. I hope you enjoyed your food. We're gonna start. Normally, I would have a gavel, call it order, so I'm just gonna call it the order. Now, and just welcome you to the Hartford Board Education Workshop Journalism and Media Academy. And I want to turn this over to Dr. Torres Rodriguez, so she can facilitate our workshop. Thank you.
I'm gonna just open with some remarks. Good evening, everyone. Getting some feedback. You're good? Okay. So, welcome and thank you for being here this evening. I know that it is a very busy time of year. So, for the principals in the house, as a former principal, dig in, right? Dig in. We're gonna make it to the end of the year. Teachers, same to you. And parents in our community-based members, we appreciate you for your commitment. Certainly, need to acknowledge our board members. I know this is part of a board workshop, but, you know, we had a retreat last week. They've been in and out of meetings, and so I just wanna acknowledge the fact that, one, you've been busy thus far, but get ready, 'cause graduations are coming. You're not done yet. I wanted to kind of remind us that the board shops provide an opportunity for our board members and for our community as well to really learn directly from our administrators, our staff, around what it is that happens every day. And as it relates to SGCs, just highlighting for us and reminding us that SGCs in design are part of our approach to shared leadership. And though we have always, right, room for improvement in all areas of what we do, do know that this is at the center of what we're committed to, making sure that we distribute the leadership and then we have voice at all levels of the organization. And, you know, that it gets to the ownership of the work ahead. I'm going to also acknowledge Dr. Colon Rivas and his team for the work that they've been doing throughout the year, to really make sure that SGCs work around the family and community engagement plan and do it in a way that's really aligned to all of the other district goals. So, thank you again for being here and always on a personal note for allowing me to and my team, of course, to serve and lead our district to the next level of improvement. So, Dr. Colon Rivas, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So, thank you for being here. And I'm Jose Colon Rivas. I'm the Chief of Operations and Engagement for Hartford Public Schools. And I am thrilled and glad that I have a phenomenal team of professionals that I work with and make this work exciting and make this work a good action plan that we're always looking for ways to improve. So, with us tonight, we have Trish Torreya. Trish, where are you? Right here. Carla. And we have Alarice. We have Marta Benton. Where are you? I know you're here.
She's taking a phone call.
Shaleem Ar from our team. We have Judith from our team. So, we truly appreciate the work that you've been doing, and thank you for all that. So, tonight, who's doing?
Right here.
Good. So, we would like to share with you a couple of things. The beginning of the school year, the engagement team decided that it was important for us to truly understand what was happening in the schools around engagement, family engagement, community engagement, all those good factors that actually make that school strong and stronger. So, the team, the names that I just mentioned, decided to go and do some school visits. And we asked principals to invite their SGC or PTO or parents to our conversation, in which will be very informal, and we wanted to learn a couple of things. We wanted to learn what was working, what has been working in your school, what are the good things that are happening around engagement? What are the challenges that you're facing right now around engagement? And how can we, Central Office, support in making sure that we help you with those challenges? So, for everyone tonight, we will discuss what did we learn during our school visits, where are we now? And, of course, what are the expectations in the coming year? So, let's start with what we learned. Next slide. So, we learned that most of the conversations that are happening in schools are strength-based approach. And they're really too productive conversations about compliance, effectiveness, and accountability. Every parent, every administrator, every teacher who was around the table talk about those three areas: compliance, effectiveness, and accountability. We talked about that there are many challenges to engagement. And it's not an excuse. There are challenges, and schools are facing those challenges. And they were, thank you, they were very open and let us know exactly what those challenges were. So, some of them, the ones that were mentioned, were transportation, the geography, how far parents have to come into Hartford or within Hartford for meetings, the fact that there are multiple meetings throughout the week that both parents and teachers and administrators have to attend. And here's yet another one with the SGCs or PTOs, and the capacity to maintain school We learn throughout the entire process, and this is really, really important, 'cause we learned that everyone describes engagement like student learning is a shared responsibility and takes place anytime, anywhere. So, when parents and administrators and teachers and students talk about engagement, they talk about what was happening within the schools and what was also happening outside school. And that's so important to all of us, 'cause we don't define engagement only as, "Let's bring in the parents into the school and let's engage them." Let's really take a look at what they're doing outside our schools and how they're engaging with their children, with their community, with their families. It is extremely important to define the role of community partners on school governance councils in all schools. So, as you all know, school community partners are part of the membership of our SGCs, and we were asked to truly define who are those individuals, what is their participation, what is their role, and how can they contribute to the larger team of the SGC? And then we talked about differentiated engagement. And we said that it's about reciprocal relationships, so we cannot treat every family the same way. We have to truly learn from the families. And we actually had these conversations in many of the schools with many individuals. So, depending on where I'm coming from, it's gonna be a way for you, the team, to work with me in terms of my needs and my wants. So, there are many other things that we learned, but we're going to have a conversation at the end of our workshop, and individuals will have the opportunity to share some of the other learning items that we actually discussed during those meetings. So, the next slide is where are we now? So, as we mentioned to the teams when we visited the schools, we said, "Let us know what's working. Let us know the challenges, and tell us how we can help." So, one of the challenges that the teams expressed was about, "We would like to have some direction in terms of how to work with the SGCs, how to work with the PTOs, how to make this happen." And we have convening district-wide learning sessions. We have invited, been inviting individuals, have gone back to schools, have visited your SGCs and PTOs meetings at night. We have provided guidance on the use of Title I funds. And I did not mention, but Michelle from the Finance Department joined our team, and she actually came to every single visit. She also came to your SGCs and PTO meetings, and she was invited to those. She was present, explaining how can we utilize Title I funds, what are the parameters, and what are the parameters within Title I. We have connected you with Hartford Parent University Training, and most of you have gone through a training. And those of you who still need to go through a training, you need to contact us, especially Carla and Alarice. And we will be working with you to make sure that the parents and teachers go through the training, and this is the SGC training. We have linked your teams to our NRZs, to higher education, to our CBOs, and we have created website support. A good majority of the schools mentioned that one of the problems that they had was that they did not have a website, a school website. We called Deb Zimmerman, and immediately, the next day, Deb Zimmerman was meeting with teams, start creating those websites. Some of you, the majority of you, have actually taken advantage of her expertise, and we now have the websites. Why the website? Part of what we talked about was the need for us to have all the minutes of those meetings that you attend posted, and we wanted to have a place for them to post it. So, we mentioned, "Let's create the website so we can then provide information around engagement, provide the minutes, provide any other data that you feel is appropriate that will really help parents." And then, we did the revising of our action plan to ensure that it's intentional, inclusive, aligned, and uses performance measures. We have worked with a plan that asks every school to list activities, so most of the time, you were listing activities. We went through a full training a month ago, and all of you were present, and tonight, Trish is gonna talk about that plan, in which we have changed the structure of our action plan. And now, it's aligned to our plans, school improvement plans, it's aligned to the different performance measures. And we continue to provide support. If you called the department, you will get a phone call back. If you email the department, you will receive an email back telling you, "Let us know what you need, and we will help you." And we'll help you to make it happen for your school. So, in terms of the expectations for the next school year, we would like to continue to cultivate leadership among all families, including formal leaders. We are going to use our new guidebook and tools to orient and communicate with all council members. We're gonna ensure that our school governance team, councils, business are well documented and available. We wanna make sure that those minutes are posted, that individuals are reading the minutes, that we have the opportunity to translate those minutes into all different languages. We would like to prepare for transitions with SGC, PTAs, PTO, all the membership and leadership. And we had asked every school, we have asked for a deadline. So, we have a deadline of October, Monday, October 16th, in which every single SGC in the district will complete their data board or data dashboard and the action plan. So, there are two things, that we have provided training, and we have gone through workshops. And now, we're asking for a deadline, and that's our October 16th, Monday, October 16th. So, the work that we have done throughout the year has really been around alignment. We would like to align, we would like to really talk about what's working, what's not working, the challenges. And for that, the team, out of all the information that we acquire from those meetings, then revise an action plan and came with a new action plan. That action plan was presented to everyone, and from that feedback, now we have a very strong structure or document in which every single school will have to then inform what's happening and how it's correlated to school goals and expectations. So, I'm going to bring Trish Torreya. But before Trish, yes, where is she? Come right in, because there was something very important happening tonight. So, we have our Director of Food and Nutrition, who came up with this phenomenal idea. As we were actually going through all these visits, completing the visits, Lonnie and I had a good conversation. And Lonnie said, "You know, Jose, you have been talking about alignment, and you have been talking about how we can actually help each other." And she offered this great opportunity to work with SGCs around nutrition. So, tonight, and this was her idea too, so credit to my colleague here, she said, "Why don't we open our cafeteria? Why don't we serve the food that we're serving every day to our students? And then, why don't we have a quick conversation about how we can then align this one particular action?" So, I'm gonna let you talk for at least five minutes, just to get, introduce maybe your staff, 'cause I know that we're working very hard, and then let's talk about this alignment.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for coming. And so, I did want you to see the food that we serve to your students every day, and this was a combination of a couple of the meals that we have on our menu, and they are USDA foods, so that's important to us. And my staff is over there, Matt and Yosef and Annette and Elaine and Trish and Charles and Todd and Chris and Anna and Candy, and the staff in the back all came tonight to help out with this. But, the students, so yes, thank you. I'm very blessed. I work with some absolutely fabulous people. I'm very blessed. And so, the menu tonight really is, we are foods, it's funded, our program is funded through USDA, and we have very specific guidelines that need to be met regarding the types of foods and the nutritional quality. There are sodium, fat, calorie restrictions, there's all sorts of guidelines that we need to follow, and everything you ate tonight does fit in with those guidelines. The chicken was a USDA food, but I'd say the things I'm probably the most proud of is that Jamaican beef patty is right here, local. It is Scott's Jamaican Beef Patty. And we worked with them, and I don't know, where's Brunella? She's in the very back. Brunella is our Assistant Director of Nutrition Support, and Brunella worked with Scott's, and they took their product and reformulated it so that it can meet all of the USDA dietary guidelines, and took it and made it a whole grain, lower fat, lower sodium, but also did the required getting the child statement, getting it tested by USDA so it could be approved. That was a lot of work on their part. They did an outstanding job, and they're a wonderful company to work with. And that roll is theirs also. They took their cocoa bread, and we couldn't find a whole grain roll that we liked, and they took their cocoa bread and developed it into a whole grain roll and made it for the specifications and the size that we needed. They are outstanding. And this summer and last summer, they actually make our sandwiches for our summer feeding meals, so that we, for the cold meal program, so that we can serve fresh sandwiches every day and not have to use a frozen product. So, Scott's is, and we love to do that. The vegetables are local, those were two recipes that we developed this year, and the arroz con gandules, while it might not have as much spice as some people would like, took us quite a long time to find all the products in quantities that we needed to buy for our cafeterias, including the sofrito, the gandules, and that's made with brown rice. And so, it meets all of the USDA requirements. And so, it takes a lot of work for us to find foods, and we're always looking to try and improve those menus. So, I think that that's probably some of the stuff that we're really proud of here. And I think that we can do a lot together. I believe that we have a lot in alignment. You're talking to a registered dietitian, Brunella's a registered dietitian, Elaine's another dietitian. We are all about nutrition, and I believe that one of the things that's important to me is how are we going to, it's not nutritious unless you actually chew it and swallow it. And so, I can put anything I want on the menu, but I need you to actually consume it. And so, what can we do together to increase consumption, especially of the vegetables? We, the fruit choices, what you saw on the line was our hot meal choices. And every day, and I'm not gonna say that we don't fail days, there are days we fail, we're working with food, but every day, we try and have a chef salad choice out every day. We have a cold sandwich choice at the secondary levels, we have that parfait. We have two hot alternates, so we really, we have the fruit choices. What you see is not what didn't happen here today at lunch, because that really, we didn't do anything special above and beyond offering a couple more choices so you can see some of the foods, but you've seen our line, Jay, so I'd have to say to you that this is what your students see. And if you're at a pre-packed school, there's a challenge there, because we don't, we can't serve anything in those schools. So, High School Inc., Breakthrough 2, those schools can't serve anything that isn't wrapped or sealed. But I want you to know that we have put a lot of time and effort, and we actually plate those products ourselves. So, they get these fresh fruits, they get these fresh vegetables, they get that Jamaican beef patty. It just comes wrapped, and so the look of it is a little different, but the quality of it is just the same. So, I think that's important for you to know. But when we look at how do we fit into you, what can we do? What can you do at the schools? You know, maybe, you know, we're looking for as many culturally diverse recipes as we possibly can. Maybe we can have a recipe contest and get some of those family recipes. This rice recipe is my staff, their home recipe. We took the five top people who wanted to compete, they all brought their recipes in, and we taste-tested it, and we worked with them. This is our family's recipe. The oatmeal we serve at breakfast is one of our employees, it's her family recipe that we serve to the schools, and we actually got a manufacturer to process it for us so that we could package it. So, they came to Hartford, they worked with us, they took our recipe, and they taste-tested it with the students. So, that's the stuff that I think that we really could do some collaboration on. The vegetables are important to me. As a dietitian, the least consumed nutrients in our country come from fruits, vegetables, and milk. And we, as a country, and we, as a population, and we, as adult parents, need to help these students to get to be the healthiest they can as adults, and that means getting them to consume this food. And so, what can we do to that? This was the, the cabbage was another recipe that actually was really, Matt found and knew that having curried cabbage was something that was very popular with a lot of our population. What does that look like for you? What can we do to work on that? How can we get nutrition as part of the thought process in our students, in our parents? How can they know that that rice is brown? They can make it just as healthy at home, and it didn't have salt in it, and what can we do? So, those are the things, that I can think of a million things that we could work on together and really be a part of each other's lives and really do some good work here in Hartford, 'cause I think we've got a great place to work, and I've got, we've got the best schools, we've got the best students, and we absolutely have the most wonderful families. And I wanna support that to the best of my ability. So, thank you. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, okay?
Thank you. Appreciate it. And thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. So, Chairs and Co-Chairs, I think that you're hearing, right, some ideas as we're talking about nutrition for this wonderful action plan. So, now, we have Trish Torreya, and Trish is gonna walk us through the entire action plan, what it is, the expectations, and the connection.
Thank you, Jose. Lonnie, I don't know, I love you, but you may have to reopen the recipe contest, 'cause I didn't get to do my arroz con gandules. I don't know about that. Hi, everybody. I'm Trish Torreya, Executive Director of Engagement. Very, very happy to be here this evening to really talk about the importance of alignment in the process of engagement. Art is in the eye of the beholder. I assure you, I don't think that is art. My colleagues tease me about how much I love that wordle. What that does for me, however, is remind me of the many, many different components and ingredients that come into engagement. Now, interestingly, in this particular slide, we're really talking about parent engagement. When you talk about family and community engagement, you start multiplying the factors. So, one of the things that we really wanted to think about is, how do we align engagement across the district, but still have each school have its own ingredients? So, we've been talking about food. So, each of you has a particular group of students, families, faculty, demographics in the community. So, how do you begin to shape engagement and align it in a way that makes sense for you? Now, one of the things that I wanna be sure to mention is that the Family Action Plan is not new. I really want to acknowledge Marta Benton, and I'm not sure if she...
Right here, back.
Ah, hello. Marta, and in her work in the Welcome Center, actually started the use of a parent engagement action plan with the Family Resource AIDS and the Family Support Services providers. And that was a very important way for folks to start saying, "What is it that we want to accomplish this year?" So, Marta, thank you for that work. What we have done is build on it and begin to think again about how the SGCs can take ownership of the work, because it becomes easy to say, "Well, that's an FRA's responsibility," when in fact, it is all our responsibility. So, another thing that actually is existing, and I think it's extremely strong and we are building on, is the theory of change that was used in the district plan. When I look through this and I think of a theory of action, I think of just that. It's how it's supposed to happen. It's a theory. And then, what we do is operationalize it at the school level. So, when you look at the different conditions, if family and community engagement is a shared responsibility, if those adults are committed to building and enhancing their skills, knowledge, and mindsets, if schools, families, and communities engage in productive, mutually respectful partnerships, and if those partnerships focus on achieving the district's equity indicators, lot of ifs, lot of conditions, they're all doable. But when I look at this, I also think of how are we expressing the values that we have about shared leadership and responsibility? So, with all of those, then, we go to family and community engagement will be a meaningful contributor to increase student performance, et cetera. Interestingly, what this doesn't say is it will also contribute to family well-being. So, these are the components. What I've done here is start with the actual action plan. These are the components of the action plan. This is what we ask schools to do. And again, it's no longer the FRA, FSSP, it's the responsibility of the SGC to say, "What are we going to do this year?" So, when you look at the far left, when we look at equity indicators, the way that I think of this is, begin with the end in mind. Where do we wanna end up? What do we wanna make sure our students are better at by the end of the year? And the same thing with family goals. So, where are we headed? And then, engagement strategies, how are we gonna get there? Funding, what kind of resources are we going to use? One of the things that we found extremely valuable, as Jose said, is that Michelle Strauter from Finance was able to help us, help schools, really think about how you can use Title I funds, because sometimes those funds, unfortunately, are not being spent, because you can't use them for food, for example, but you can use them for educational programs. So, really clarifying, so that nothing stays on the table. Jose doesn't like money on the table. Okay. Then, the performance measures. When you've invested, why not find out about your return on investment? So, that then becomes the measures of how much did we do, how well did we do, and who is better off? And then, of course, the timeline. So, these are the components that we are asking for, but we are also then providing guidance on how you go about developing those components. So, this is an expression of customer service. Our students' families are our customers, and we need to see what it is that we're going to accomplish in the course of the year. And very important, it should be a living document, and again, with diverse input and diverse ownership. I'm a big believer in inquiry. So, instead of saying, here's what you should do, I'm always a believer in let's ask some questions. So, take time to reflect, to organize, to look at the data, to communicate, to look at your SIP, your Strategic Improvement Plan. I see some heads nodding. That's great. And one of the key, two of the key questions that we're asking of you is how will the SGC, PTA, PTO, and FRAs be involved in developing, implementing, and assessing the plan? So, before you develop the plan, it's that whole thing of how are you going to bring people together and make sure that there is the diverse input? And then, who are your families? It was fascinating as we made visits and we asked that question. And very often, there was anecdotal information about your families, but not always based on any kind of a family profile or specifically on SIP data, et cetera. So, it becomes really, really important for you to be able to say, these are our families and this is what we want to accomplish, which is not to say that lived experience is not an important form of data. So, as you get to know your families, please include that kind of information. So, we're asking for three goals to build family capacity, and some examples that we've given are parent leadership and family computer literacy. Whatever goal you choose is fine. Now, you'll recognize the equity indicators that were included in the 2020 Strategic Operating Plan, and there are eight equity indicators. We're asking you, in addition to three family goals, to choose three equity indicators that you want to work on. Believe me, if you'd like to choose more, you're welcome to. I don't know that anybody's going to do that. But it's very important, then, to start looking at how you can help your families, help students achieve those indicators. I mentioned Title I funds. So, again, this is the question around Title I, but also. And in just a couple of minutes, I'm actually going to ask Diane Drakes from Simpson Waverly, who's been very gracious to talk about how she has specifically used this. But one of the things that Diane said to me, she said, you know, we didn't have to use Title I funds for this program, because we had a donation, but how nice to know that we had the funds available if we needed them. And we have provided frequently asked questions and guidance on Title I funds. Now, results-based accountability. People usually either love it or hate it. Do we have anybody who loves it in the room? You love it. That's great. All right. Haters? I'm somewhere in between. I'm somewhere in between. You know, yeah, yeah. It's going to come through in your action plan, okay? I'm a big believer that the performance measures within results-based accountability is an amazing way to think ahead and say, okay, so, here's what we're trying to accomplish. How are we going to know if we've been able to accomplish it? RBA can be very long, drawn-out process. You don't need to do all of RBA. You really look, again, at, keep the end in mind, what do you want to accomplish, and then be able to use the different measures, our effort, the quality of effort, and the difference made. Now, from what I've seen, I think we are very, very good at the effort. We usually know how many people we've served and the activities that we've offered. But then, when you start getting beyond attendance levels, timeliness of activities, satisfaction of customers, you start getting to some of these other factors that we don't often think about. And what's important is just to have that checklist there to say, gee, this could be interesting for us to incorporate. And that brings us to Diane Drakes. Diane is the family, School and Family Support Service Provider at Simpson Waverly. And I've asked her to tell you about a program and then walk you through how the program that they're doing actually fits into this action plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You guys could do better than that.
I'm Diane Drakes, and it's a pleasure to be here to talk a little bit about this program and to just share with you what we did. So, I'm sure all of you heard about Bring Your Kid to Work Day. So, I kind of did a play on it based on a video that I ran into where it was Venus and Serena Williams. Anybody heard of them? So, I saw a video with their father talking about the fact that he knew that he was creating champions. And he said, I think Venus will do okay, but Serena will claim many titles. She's going to be the stronger of the two of them. And I sat there and I watched the video and I said, wow, that dad knew and he had vision. How can I work this? So, then, that's how I came up with the Bring Your Parent to Work, to School Day, because I wanted the parents to see the power that they have in creating that vision for their child. And so, we got a chance to play the video for the parents and to be able to just talk you through why the event ended up working out. So, as you look at the equity indicators, we had a big problem with attendance. I've been at Waverly, I'm going into my fourth year next year. And so, attendance was a huge issue. We've been able to bring down our issues with absenteeism and tardiness. We're still working on, but tardiness is also a huge issue. So, with the kindergarten population, they were often late. Well, that poses a problem, because a lot of the academic components and things that they do in the morning are really key to the function of them learning and being present from the start of the day to the end of the day. So, this program was built to start early in the morning for the parents to be picked up by the teacher in the cafeteria. So, if they weren't there, it was going to be hard for them to get picked up by the teacher, right? So, we had a lot of conversations with them about being there on time. And then, once the parents got there, they got picked up and brought in by the teacher. So, we got a chance to address the equity indicator of the 10% chronic absenteeism, and then couple that with the other equity indicator that we focused on, which was 75% of reading proficiency by the end of the third grade. So, those were the two things that would fall in that first category. In terms of engagement strategies, we went with the flyer that you saw up on the board, really connecting and reaching out to the parents and talking to them, especially the ones that were tardy. Like, we're going to be doing this program and we really need you to be here on time so you can see what your kid is missing. So, really kind of locking in. So, there's some people that will get really excited about coming to a program with their kid and coming to school, because it's the right thing to do. Then, there's some people that maybe, for whatever reason, because other things are happening and their life may not be connected with it. So, what we decided to do was a keepsake photo, so that they would get to take a picture behind a banner that said Bring Your Parent to School Day. And we said that it didn't matter if it was a direct parent in the household, a grandmother, someone, a trusted, caring adult had to bring that kid to school that day. So, we wouldn't have the issue of not having kids, not having someone with them, because there's somebody that could show up, right? Because when the parent shows up, the kid goes up. That's reality. So, we need to kind of remember to push that thought process to parents, so they understand the importance of them showing up, so that their child can excel. So, we did that, and then, we focused on the whole issue of funding. So, with this event, we didn't have to work, work too hard to have it to be funded, because we had donations, for a book donation. So, they got a book. The only other thing that we had to pay for was the breakfast, which was sponsored through the school. And then, we also did the picture. So, we had to pay for the picture. So, those were the things that we had to pay for, but we didn't have to utilize our Title I funds. But if you were to use something similar, to remember that if you're doing something like that, I think that's always the catch, is thinking about what could you give to a parent that would be helpful to them. So, we purchased things that were very useful, like we had a cookie sheet that had magnetic letters on it, so that they could help their children with lettering, and really thinking about providing the parents with tools that they may not think about to be able to be stronger parents. And when you think about the timeframe that we picked for this, we really did it in September, because we wanted to have this to become a habit, and we wanted it to be something that we got connected with them in the very beginning. When you look at performance measures, I always like to say, for those haters that weren't about the measurements, what gets measured gets done. And the reality is, you could think you're fabulous, but numbers don't lie. So, when you look at who's showing up and what you have on the table and on paper, it really makes a big difference. So, to be able to look at those performance measures, to say, how much did we do? You know, how many people did we serve? That's why it was really huge to say, we want every parent to come, or to have someone to come, you know? And so, it said, sorry, I can't make it, but I'm sending such and such in my place. And I didn't give people a, I don't have anybody. Like, who can you call? So, you don't want your kid to be the only one. I've used a little, a level of guilt, and that's okay for you to do, especially with the younger parents, because most times, they don't have a benchmark to compare it to. So, it's really good to be able to make them know the importance of showing up. And then, how much did we get done? We were really able to take a look at how much we were able to get done by the feedback that was given. How well did we do? We gave them an opportunity to provide that feedback and surveys as well. And who was better off? Clearly, the students are better off, and the families and the parents are better off, because they have information. And so, what I was sharing with Trish earlier is that I think it's so important for us to recognize the importance of educating our parents and not making the assumption that they have that information. You know, a lot of times, you don't know what you don't know. And so, it's our job to help them to be informed about what they don't know, so that they can make better decisions and choices to support their children. So, that makes everyone be better off, including ourselves, because it gives us an opportunity to do our job with a real partner that's connected to us and that's well-informed to make those good decisions. I was the point person, and I also worked very closely with the kindergarten teachers to make that happen. So, they actually were following up with parents when I told them I didn't hear back from them, or we were waiting to, so that we could get that attendance. So, really connecting with teachers or whomever may be involved with that specific event that you're working on is really, really key. But those are the main things about this program to me that were really effective, and I just am grateful for the opportunity to be here to talk about it. Are there any questions? So, if the parents show up, the children...
Show up.
If the parents show up, the children go up, right? And it's really important for us, because you don't know what you don't know. And so, we need to educate and make sure that all of our programs have that emphasis, where we can come up with some things that are our intentions, so that we can measure what we're doing, because what gets measured gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. So, we come into the last part of our workshop, and we want this last session to be very interactive. We have board members in the room, as we have SGC and administrators in the room, and PTO and PTA members and staff members. So, we are better off in central office, the engagement team, because we learn a lot from you. And we're able to actually now take it into implementation. So, take the information, internalize it, use it, unpack it, and then try to present it and help the schools move forward. What we would like to do in the next 10 minutes, it's for you, the schools, to share with board members, open conversation about what's truly working when it comes to that one policy that we talked about, SGCs. So, it's a board policy to do certain things within the school governance councils. So, we want to take the conversation from policy to implementation. How is it working? What are the challenges? This is your opportunity to share with our board members, those areas you truly feel we should pay closer attention. So, what are those? This is open to discussion. So, who will get, who would like to get the microphone first? Before I start calling on people.
Mr. Mihalko. Thank you so much. What I have to say is, one of the biggest strengths of the school governance council is being able to have all those stakeholders on a consistent basis coming into the school. So, we have teachers, community members, parents, and it really is an incredible place to be able to bring forth the school improvement plan, which is in alignment with the district strategic operating plan, and talk to all these stakeholders, saying, where do you see yourself in this? What do we want for the kids? And how can we move forward together to achieve this? And so, it really is a powerful group of people, that it's not like, okay, today, I have something I need feedback on, let me see if I can pull a group together. It's a group that, you know, we are consistently working together with a common vision on a monthly basis. So, I think that's one of the greatest strengths of the school governance council.
Thank you. Wells?
Parents, parents. How's that working?
Well, you know, at Milner, I actually think that our SGC is really on point. We, we meet regularly. We have a core group of parents that are consistent in attendance, but like, for example, if I know I'm not going to be there, I'll reach out to one of the other parents and say, can you be there? So, we, there are always going to be about two or three parents at the meeting. We have our teachers, our principals really involved with keeping us updated and informed. And it's, it's very cohesive. We're very, I think we're very involved. What do you think, Carmen? You know, so, I didn't really have anything to say, because I actually think that what we would like to do, so, on the other side of it, what I would really like to do is, you know, work with the other schools in the North End to try to build up their SGCs. So, I've been to events at Diana's school. I've been to Simpson Waverly. I've been to Wish. I've been to MLK. And so, what I'm really hoping is that over the next, you know, couple of years, I can help the other schools, a couple, not a couple of years, a couple of months, help the schools organize, so that when the next school year starts, the North End, each, each school in the North End experiences what we experienced at Milner, and how we're able to affect change. I know you've seen our change in the newspaper and, I mean, we're out there. So, and whenever we have one of these community things, we show up. So, you know, we, we have a really great team, and I'd love to see that duplicated basically across the district, but I can only focus on the North End, one person.
So, I will pose two questions to the room. My name is Robert Eichel. I'm on the SGC at Montessori Magnet at Moilenham McDonough. The first is a simple question. I also would like to form links with other SGCs, particularly with the other Montessori SGCs. So, if anybody's here from Annie Fisher or Craig Montessori, it'd be wonderful to speak to you afterwards. But bigger question to the principals, I know there's some of you out there. What do you need? What is the one thing that you need and want from your SGC? What can we do for you?
That's wonderful. All right. So, principals, what do we need from SGCs? Or, let's talk about challenges. Victor, you want to take? I know we have a couple of volunteers in the back. Would you like to?
Sure.
Or, or just share with the board your...
So, I'm Victor Christopher from the principal at Burns. And I'm going to answer your question first. Like, so, from the SGC, really, what we need is for us to collaborate on messaging the school vision and what we're trying to accomplish for the school. And it's just, it just helps us to have parents on board that help us in, one, creating the vision, and then relaying that message to parents and engaging more parents to participate. And then, I know that, I think you had asked originally, what's working, what's not working? So, I'm just going to lean a little bit into like, what I think is not working right now. I think that personally, as principals, we get our information from one area and right, and parents are getting information from a different area. So, we need to align the message, so that if, so, for example, when there are parent workshops, maybe we, you know, whenever those take place, maybe we could all be at those parent workshops and make sure that the people that we answer to, for example, I know I call Carla weekly. And, but, so, I might get a message from Carla, but parents might get a different message from where they're getting their information from. And what it starts to lead to is a, 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 kind of like an atmosphere where there could be some mistrust, because they're thinking, wait a second, we just heard ABC. Like, I'll just throw out a quick example. The budget process this year was a different process than it's been in the past. So, parents might hear, hey, wait a sec... So parents might hear, "Hey, wait a second. Why hasn't your principal, you know, done ABC with the budget?" But fact of the matter is that our information on budget was different than the parents were getting. So we really just need to align the message and make sure that we're all getting the same information so we could all be on the same page.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate it. In the back, anyone? Yes, no, yes. You have the whole team with you.
Tyrone Richardson, principal at Batonsa STEM. What's working for us and what's always worked for SGCs, I think, in my leadership, is transparency and clarity. Working with parents around, letting them understand what the school improvement plan process is, what data looks like, analyzing that stuff, making decisions around budget and staffing personnel and programmatic stuff for our building has really been helpful. And it's also good with letting them take part in making decisions about what we should do with funds that we may have that popped up suddenly or, you know, restrictions that we have in certain areas like Title I or making those tough decisions around cuts that we have to make. That's always enlightening to have parents at the table when we have those processes. Setbacks or difficulties as a Magnet school, of course, relating to our neighborhood and our parents. We don't have a lot of neighborhood kids that attend our school, so that's always a problem. We wanna collaborate with businesses and organizations around for us. So that's one of the difficulties we have.
Thank you. Oh, parent. You're the parent, yes.
I did not raise my hand.
You didn't raise your hand?
Okay, my name is Abigail Corhoden. I'm from High School Link. I'm the SGC co-chair. I think the one thing that comes to my mind, because our challenge has been family engagement at the high school level, I don't know if other high schools can relate to that, but there it is, it's the elephant in the room. And I think from my point of view, not only as a parent, but also as an SGC facilitator, is, once y'all parents get past middle school, where do you go? Could you come back to the table, please? Because your kids need you. They need you to continue to embrace them and to support them and to stay engaged. Because without you, they don't make it to college. They don't make it. So you have to stay engaged and the high school is the challenge. So really and truly, once you guys are going through elementary and going through middle school, that's great, yahoo, keep it up. Stay engaged.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Yes.
Thank you.
Hello to everyone. My name is Natalia Langlars. I am the SGC co-chair at Martin Luther King School. And everything is soaring, so great. And I am very excited at the possible positive prospects going ahead. At MLK, our, our journey has been so rough because so often we thought we were going to be closed. And so often we lost parents, you know, through the process. So for me, I, I find that, I find myself in a position where I have an SGC today and I don't have an SGC tomorrow. And I have an SGC today and I don't have an SGC tomorrow. So I am here just like really, I am just taking in all the positive energy because I am not giving up. I am not giving up. And just yesterday, we had such an info... I, I went to Dr. Crawford, you know, to speak about one issue. And then our community partner showed up, Christian Activities Council, Pastor AJ. And then the FRA walked in. And then the FRC walked in. And the whole conversation was around SGC and what we can do. And I am very happy to, you know, we have this beautiful plan. And MLK is in the game. We're gonna make this happen. I am gonna be calling on you. Mr. Rivers, I'm really gonna be reaching out to you some more. You know, because we wanna, we wanna make this thing work and we really do want to engage our parents. I am, I am certain that it can be done. So thanks for having me here today. And just, you know, I'm gonna be also working with Ms. Bavern. She has been very, very instrumental in, in, in telling me about little strategies and, you know, creating little surveys to catch the parents' attention and, and stuff like that. So I'm happy to be here today.
Thank you. I appreciate it. One more comment. So, in the back, yes?
I'm Candace Worth with the Chief Hartford. And I just wanted to say that in my years of covering the board and SGC annual forums, there's always been discussion of budgets. So I just wanted to ask if your, really ask a question, if your budget reviews are underway or will they be included in the budget? Just a question, really.
So, answer to that. I mean, I know we have Paula Terry in the room and I'm not gonna put her on the spot, but yes, we are changing the process. And basically, we're giving the opportunity to individuals to look at the budget process in a very different way than we have done before. So you will receive very, very specific instructions on how this coming year's budget is gonna work for every school. I think everyone has gone through a process right now. We need to make sure that we communicate the process. Gonna make sure that we bring individuals to the workshops and explain how those will be working. But you will be, there will be communication to everyone around the budget process. So there is one particular board member. Every single board member plays a great role in our district because they all support our children and support our educators and support our administrators and our superintendent. There's one board member who's been working in this one particular committee around family and community engagement. And he's the chair of this committee. And there are other board members who are actually part of this committee who have been very, very involved. And because of this individual's push, we have been able to accomplish a lot this year. So I really would like to give credit to Mr. Flores, who is here tonight with us. Because not only he's been inspirational in terms of how much have we done, it's really been inspiration how well we're doing. And he's pushing us on who's better off at the end of this process. And with that, I'm gonna let him kinda like close this one particular workshop because there's a lot that has been happening in our committees. And once again, it is through your leadership that we have been able to push it. So thank you. Thank you.
Well, this, this has really been a great evening. And I'm, I'm really very happy. I wish we had more people here. And I'd like to encourage all of you to encourage your friends and your colleagues as the SGCs to come to these sessions because I think they are important. I want to thank Annie for the food. I know she kept pointing at me when she was talking because I did a critical review of her rice. I thought the meal was wonderful. And I want to thank Diane Adre. I, I thought her presentation was marvelous because she gave us a different view, not from an administrative standpoint, but from a real life of what is happening at the schools. And as she says, "When the parents show, the children go." And that's the reason I got involved in this. Some of you may have heard me say that I came to the board through SGCs. I worked at the SGC at Burns and before that at McDonough. Because, one, I got involved because I thought if I want my children to believe that school's important, I had to model it for them. So I decided to make school a big priority for me. And also because, now, most of us in this room, I believe, are parents. And you know that you, as a parent, you are the expert on your child. Now, we have a, a, a lot of professionals in here who have studied a lot about methodology and so forth, but you are the expert on your child. So you need to be involved. It's, I believe that it has to be a partnership between the school system, the administrators, the teachers, the community, and the parents. And if the parents are not involved, it's gonna be a lot more difficult for your children to be successful. Our superintendent and our board are committed to family and community engagement. I chair the Family and Community Engagement Committee at the board. And Vice Chair Glanville and Chairman Stolings, who's around somewhere, sit on that committee with me. Every month, we meet with Dr. Colón-Rivas and his staff. And we ask, "Tell us what you've been doing." And they report to us and we have feedback back and forth. And, and, and we talk about how can we do things better? And I'm glad to hear from the people that have spoken that we are doing things better. But I think we still have a lot to do. I, I was very pleased to hear you talk about wanting to go and help other groups. It's something that I've talked with Dr. Colón-Rivas about, that we need to get those SGCs that have been very successful to pair up with the ones that are struggling so that we can help each other because we are all in this together. So I, I wanted to know that this is a big priority for the board. It's a big priority for the superintendent. We have a lot of things going on. We're going through difficult times. As Natalie said, we've often been fearful of our schools being closed. And we know that we're going to go through a school consolidation. We're not going to just announce that we're closing a school. Our superintendent is committed to transparency and she will be visiting all the communities that might be affected by consolidations and getting the parents and, and the staff involved before any ultimate decisions are made. But this is the environment we're in. And lastly, I want to apologize. I already apologized to my friend and colleague, Jose Colón-Rivas, because I know he had planned a big event for tonight. And we made him cut it back because we, the board, wanted to be here with you. And we also need to finalize this year's budget because we're running out of time. We have to meet a deadline. So after this, the board will be getting together to work on the budget. But I thank you all for coming. And I thank you for commitment to your schools. And enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you. So before we adjourn, I know there are other board members in the room. Are there any final comments, any questions? We can actually, I know we're running out of time. You can funnel the questions through my department and we can then bring the questions to the SGCs or the different schools. But if you have a question, board members, right now, and we would like the team to address that, this is the time. If not, we're good, yes? So thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening and keep up the excellent work that you're doing. Thank you.